Good evening. I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April 9th, 2019, to order at 6:30. Please stand before the invocation of my Pastor Bob So, in packed church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's right. Our God and Father, we thank you for the privilege of being together tonight. We thank you, Lord, for the people in this room who give of their selves to guide this community. Father, we thank you for the joy that many families find in this community. And Father, may that be strengthened as they continue to grow and raise their families and their children. Father, we ask for your protection. We thank you for those who have been so given that responsibility to protect us, to guide this community and protect it. Father, we ask your blessings tonight upon the decisions that will be made. May they be a part of the passion that we have for this community to thrive and be a place where families excel. Thank you, Father, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Gurnsey.
Thank you, Marge.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Span.
Here.
One check.
Here.
Use that.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Pettit.
Here.
Lamarcus.
Here.
And Hardaway.
Here.
President, we have a quorum. Petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Mr. Spires.
Um, I have nothing this evening.
Councilman Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as many of you know, um, a couple of weeks back, the Andrain Fighting Fifty-Niners Boys Basketball Team won the Class II State Championship uh, in dramatic fashion. And I see Coach Stengel in the back row with some of the guys trickling in. Uh, I'll give them a second to uh, to get in. I know some of the parents are coming in as well. Um, honoring Andrain's Fighting Fifty-Niners Boys Basketball Team, Class II A State Champions. Whereas the Andrain Fighting Fifty-Niner Boys Basketball Team honored their school and their families by achieving the distinction of having captured the Class II A IHSAA State Championship through their skill and determination. And whereas the Andrain Fighting Fifty-Niners Boys Basketball Team, led by head coach Brad Stengel, who was voted the Times Coach of the Year, assistant coaches Joe O'Neal, Aaron Austin, and Devin Ellis had a season record of 22 wins, eight losses, five and one in the conference. And whereas the Andrain Fighting Fifty-Niners won the Lake Station sectional with victories over Bishop Knoll, 54-51, Lake Station, 62-56, and a 10-point fourth-quarter comeback victory in the championship game over Bowman Academy, 70-64. And whereas the Andrain Fighting Fifty-Niners won the North Judson Regional with a last-second victory over Michigan City Marquette on Nick Flesher's game-winning free throw, 71-70, and a hard-fought victory in the championship game over Westview, 60-49. And whereas the Andrain Fifty-Niners won the Lafayette Jefferson Semi-State with an amazing, heart-stopping, double-overtime win against Frankton, 73-64, to advance to the state championship game. And whereas the Andrain Fighting Fifty-Niners won the Class II A Stampy- State Championship with another come-from-behind performance after trailing by six points with two minutes to play to defeat Litten Stockman, 59-54. And whereas Andrain was founded in 1959, it's the Fifty-Niners' 59th school year, and the school's address is 5959 Broadway. And in the state championship game, Andrain scored 59 points to pull out the win. Coach, that's from your wife. Whereas the Town Council of the Town of Maryville desires to recognize and honor the achievements of the Andrain Boys Fifty-Niner Basketball Team, and their names are as follows. Freshmen Robbie Ballantyne, sophomores Daryl Snyder, Jacob Anderson, Omarin Williams, Dylan Maury, Sam Ruiz, Ben Jones, Deshaun Burnet, Nick Flesher, and Kyle Ross, juniors Eric Goodz, Damian Kondruff, and DeJay Bartz, and seniors Nick Wosicki, Eric Kendrick, Matt Lolito, and team captain Johnny Carruthers. Whereas the Andrain Fighting Fifty-Nine Boys Basketball Team represented Northwest Indiana and the Town of Maryville in their quest for a state championship and should be applauded for their dedication, hard work, and achievement. Now therefore, the Town of Maryville does hereby call upon all residents of the Town of Maryville to honor the outstanding accomplishments of the Andrain Fifty-Niner Boys Basketball Team and to thank them for their very successful year. Whereunto we have set forth our hand and caused the seal of the Town of Maryville to be affixed, Richard Hardaway, Town Council President. Ladies and gentlemen, I've had the pleasure of watching these kids for the past two years, and I want to tell you, Coach, I've seen a lot of basketball in my time, and that Lafayette Jeff Semi-State was absolutely unbelievable. You guys are very, very- we should be very, very proud of you guys for what you did. Uh, all the guys, um, it's been an amazing accomplishment and an amazing season for these young men. And they've kept the tradition going. Not many people may realize this, Rich and I may realize this. This is the eighth straight state title that Andrain has brought back. Starting in 2013, the football team won a state title. In 2014, the baseball team won a state title. 2015, the baseball team won a state title. 2016, girls soccer. 2017, girls volleyball. 2018, the baseball team again won the state championship. And now, 2019, the boys' basketball team. So for a II-A, small Catholic school in Northwest Indiana, that's a pretty good accomplishment. So you guys need to be applauded for that. Coach, if you and the guys want to come up and if the parents want to take a picture, we've got a framed proclamation and copies for the guys. You're welcome. And I want to tell you, if there- is he here? I see him here. If there's a better sixth man in the state of Indiana than that young man, I want to meet him.
I agree.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
Guys, I'm going to give you those, and you can pass those out to your teammates, and the parents can have those framed. All right. Congratulations. And you're going to bring it back again next year because you've got a lot of sophomores and juniors, right? All right.
Yes, it's okay. I'm not against it.
Congratulations.
I like you.
Come on. I got a grin symbol in my face there.
Congratulations.
Nice job, Eric.
You say that when you say nothing.
Good job. Good job. Ben. Eric. Congratulations. Congratulations. There you go. Congratulations.
Standing committees, budget, finance, Councilwoman Baron. Oh, sorry. Consent agenda. Council payable registered voucher for April 9th, along with Town Council minutes from March 26th. Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Span, that we approve the consent agenda and any discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Standing committees now, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Public works, Councilman Minchuck.
Yes, we have the survey agreement for the Broadway sidewalks, which will go from Seventy-third all the way down to Thirty. We have federal funding for that, but it's only going to cover one side of the street. We went ahead and had the survey done for both sides just so we know in the future uh, what it will cost us.
Right. Good. Thank you.
Anything else you want to add to that, Bruce?
No, it's worth the- it's with first group engineering, and it's $451,600.
We need a motion, Bruce?
Yes.
Motion. Second. Motion by Councilman Minchuck, second by Councilman Span, that we approve the uh, survey agreement for Broadway sidewalks, Seventy-third Avenue, US Thirty. Any discussion?
Side of the street, is it?
What side do we choose, Bruce, during that?
Um, the side that the federal funding will be paying for will be the east side.
The east side.
And then, um, eventually, if we're able to get additional funds or if TIF funds come available, we'll do the west side.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries 7-0. Anything else on the public works?
Uh, that is all, sir.
I have a question. Bruce, when are they going to pave West Seventy-third Avenue?
Probably in July.
In July?
We'll wait till school's out.
Oh, okay. This coming July?
Yes.
Okay. Because I've had some people call me, I wanted to make sure.
It'll be in July.
Okay. Thank you.
Council affairs, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
No report tonight.
Personnel policy and the employee benefits, Councilman Pettit.
Uh, we are uh, accepting resumes um, outside for the town manager's position. Is that correct, Bruce?
Town manager and town engineer.
Town engineer until April or May 15th, right?
I believe we've got until uh, the end of May.
End of May?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so they're out on the street.
All right. Nothing else on personnel?
Oh, yes. I wanted to make uh, sorry. Wanted to make a motion to elevate Sheila Shine.
I'll second that motion.
To the position of uh, plan- did we decide on planning director?
Uh, I think it's going to be a combination of both.
Okay.
The building.
You have planning director for right now because that's what's in the salary ordinance.
Is that, okay. That's in the salary ordinance, planning director?
Okay.
So let's just use that name for right now.
That works.
Okay.
Uh, motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Minchuck, that we uh, promote Sheila Shine to planning director. Is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congrats, Sheila.
Thank you.
Are those tears over there with you? Oh.
She's got to continue to work with tears of sorrow. Depends what kind of tears they are.
We don't know if it's joy or what.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, anything else on the personnel?
Public safety, Councilwoman Yuzelak.
No report at this time.
Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
I do not have anything but Jan does.
I do. I have a couple of things. Um, just to uh, update the council, uh, the boardwalk at Prusen Cave due to the winter. And uh, right now, we have running construction there, uh, repairing the issues.
That's the one that goes around the walking path?
Yeah. It's the wooden part. There's about 200 feet or so, do you think that?
Yeah, close. It's about 150 to 200, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and I just want to remind everybody tomorrow we have our first design meeting in Sherrville at Core Construction. On April 11th, we have our senior citizen focus group for the master plan. On April 23rd, prior to the next council meeting, the park committee, uh, Roxanne is chairperson, Chrissy and Marge. You'll be uh, here for that focus group for the master plan. Taggy will be here with his information, and that's at 5:30.
What's that date?
April 23rd, the next council meeting date.
Okay.
About 5:30-ish.
Very good.
Okay. Um, and Savannah Ridge Playground, I'm receiving um, bids for that uh, through the winter months. The decking on that playground actually is uh, uh, plastic, and it cracked due to the winter, so I'm receiving bids. Once all the bids are in, I'll work with Jeff Minchuck on a design selection.
Mr. President, to Jan and to Jeff, um, Margie and Roxanne and I have seen a preliminary design for an additional subdivision in Savannah Ridge. Uh, 85 lots?
Right.
More to the south. And we had brought up, when Jan was in the audience, and we brought up to the developer about looking at giving the town maybe a larger parcel because the, the small park you have right there now. So I don't know what that does to your planning of buying equipment and stuff, Jan, you know?
Actually, what I'm going to do, because I remember that, I'm going to keep it small within the footprint that currently is there.
Mm-hmm.
So that if they do happen to uh, offer us a bigger piece of property, we can provide more to the community.
Well, they're, they're required to give either park or cash in lieu of according to the subdivision control ordinance. So we haven't seen that petition back after, was it conceptual? I think, wasn't it conceptual or was it preliminary? So we've got time to get this park planned for out there.
Sure. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, barbule affairs, Councilwoman Baron.
Um, with the weather breaking now, we're contractors getting back out on jobs that they couldn't complete in the winter time. So uh, Winnie Hill Court, that's almost done. Contract was out there uh, yesterday and today. And um, so they'll be finishing that really soon. Another day or two, and they'll be done out there. And then 57th and Massachusetts are going to be starting here pretty soon as well, so they're mobilizing for that, so. And that's all I have at this time.
But what about the um, floodplain insurance?
I didn't, uh, we were ranked a Class VII. Again, I don't have a big, long uh, congratulatory letter, but um, we're ranked again the highest in the state of Indiana for the community rating system, which lowers everybody's flood insurance premium, so.
I believe that's important to note that we continue to get uh, the residents that live in the floodplain continue to get the 15% discount on their floodplain insurance.
Okay. Mr. President, to, and Matt, I don't know if you're aware of this, and I don't want to blindside you, but I talked to Bruce about this, and I don't know if everybody else knows about it, but I was driving south on Broadway, uh, Chrissy's side, the west side of Broadway, right there by the eye doctor, there's a ditch. And Bruce indicated that the state is going through and replacing that culvert underneath Broadway, Bruce?
There's a large culvert that sort of runs catty corner, um, pretty much right across in front of uh, Light Castle. That part they're going to replace is the part that's underneath Broadway.
Right.
Um, they won't have the intersection closed, but it's going to be limited lane usage when it goes through.
Right, it's going to be down to one lane, right?
It's, it's going to be pretty cool, yeah. It's still, I would say for driving, if you can avoid that intersection, try to avoid it because.
The busiest intersection in Lake County? Good luck, Joe.
Yeah. Better than having a cave-in.
What are the dates on that, do you know?
No, I don't know yet.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Matt very much for having Myers clean up that ditch. It looks a lot better.
Yeah, they've been very cooperative. I spoke with um, the corporate manager um, over there in Grand Rapids. And um, they're now doing an O&M plan for not only their pond, but to clean up everything around there. So uh, so they're very responsive. So it's good to work with them, and um, I think they, they're going to do the right thing from this point forward.
Yeah, it's much better.
Economic development, Councilwoman-
Elections.
Oh, elections, sorry. Thank you. Election public relations, Councilwoman Yuzelak?
Uh, yes. Just a reminder, there will be a local election and county election May 7th, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And I want to thank Judge McDermott for cleaning up Wickham Street, South of Thirty. She had her team out there, and they're doing a very good job. And I think that's an award, Chrissy, for you. And they've been out there all last weekend. Okay?
As a, as a comment on that, Marge, I heard today, uh, we need to probably make arrangements, Bruce, to have the guys get the bags off of Wickham.
Right.
They're off.
They're still there.
He got it just today.
Oh, they're off?
They were supposed to be off today.
Oh, okay, good.
Oh, okay.
Excellent.
All right, good.
Uh, with that comment, Mr. President, on Marge's election announcement, uh, I want to reschedule the May- if we have a May workshop, Sheila, for Plan Commission, that needs to be moved to May 8th on Wednesday night.
Okay. No problem. Economic development, Councilman Pettit.
Mr. President, I've called a Economic Development Committee meeting for 6 o'clock on Tuesday, the 16th, before the Plan Commission. I've also invited the Plan Commission members. We have a tax abatement request um, south of the railroad tracks on the east, uh, west side of Mississippi, between Mississippi and I-65. Gentleman wants to come in with another uh, large building like he built on the north side of the railroad tracks. So the Economic Development Committee, which I believe is Councilwoman Baron, Mr. Minchuck, myself, and the two members of the chamber, uh, will hear that petition, and then we'll forward it on to the council for uh, for action. So, uh, and under RDC, Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to resurrect uh, my motion and make a motion that we instruct the town attorney to advertise under the public sale of lands for up to four acres for sale for the development of a multipurpose gymnasium for volleyball and basketball.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we uh, direct the attorney. Yes, sir.
Can I clarify the motion?
Yes.
Probably what we'd want to do is direct our engineers to go ahead and pick out or identify up to four acres and construct a legal description that we can go out to for public bid, Councilman.
Okay.
So, because we're going to need the, the legal description, the identified parcel, as to advertise for bid as well, so.
But I would like you to have the authority from the council once that's legal's done to go to the paper, so.
Absolutely, but I just wanted to incorporate everything into one motion.
That's fine, because we have the topographic survey for the property that we own at the drive-in. So I'll amend my motion according to council's recommendation.
I'd like to make a statement about the sale of the property. Um, when we started the community center planning about 20 months ago, uh, we bought the land for the community center. Um, we didn't buy it to sell it off to a private developer. We bought it for the community. Um, my problem with it is, is that once we put in four acres of usable land that was bought, again, for the community, we will forever hinder any growth of the community center. The current plans that I have seen them are not enough to serve the needs of 35,000 people. If we ever want to expand the community center, there will not be room. This is my problem. We did not purchase the land to sell it off. We purchased it for the town. And it makes no sense, whether we get tax money back or not, they could develop anywhere else in the Town of Maryville, and we would get the same benefits. But I don't understand why forcing it onto this lot of land when it doesn't need to be there. That's all I've said.
Uh, motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we uh, instruct the engineers along with the town attorney for this plot of land. Is any other discussion? Mr. Gurnsey? Roll call. I'm in favor of what she wants.
Hey, Jake?
Yes.
I abstained.
Garrett?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Motion carries 4, 2, and 1. Uh, utility liaison, Councilman Span.
Well, I don't have anything on utilities, but I'd like to show this to the council. I got these off the stop sign on 65th, 65th and 10th. Cut them, two of them down. The next day, there was another one on 65th and 10th, 63rd and 10th.
They like rabbits. They keep, they keep off.
They just keep generating them. Okay, just, you have to know, if you're riding around, you want to.
Is Vic here wearing those?
I haven't talked to you.
You want to leave me a sign before you leave, and I'll give it to her so she can-
Welcome to all of them, Bruce.
Thanks.
Bruce will keep one for his office and pass two over to Vic.
I consult and help. I'll call her on it. Okay. Yeah, I'll call, okay. No problem.
Anything else on the utility liaison? Abandoned properties, no report. That concludes committee reports, general orders. No first reading ordinances, second reading ordinances, orders 19-10, in order to the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the 2018 Geo Bond Fund for the year 2019, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve ordinance 19-10 on second reading. Any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, we have to open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on ordinance 19-10? Any public comment on ordinance 19-10? Any public comment? Roll call.
All right.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. That concludes second reading ordinance, resolutions. Resolution 19-08, the resolution authorizing then approving appointment of appraisers and acquisitions of certain real estate and/or matters related thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve resolution 19-08. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Resolution 19-09, a resolution of Town Council of Town of Maryville, Indiana, approving certain matters in connection with the establishment of an economic development area and an allocation area in the approval of an economic development plan for said area.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve resolution 19-09. Any discussion?
Mr. President, this is the third step in establishing the white lodging uh, TIF district. And then it'll go back to the Redevelopment Commission for confirmatory.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes resolution BGA action. First case, case number Z6E6-0219. LeSean Davis and Mark Knox, the owner is uh, Lake County Trust Number 33, requests a special exception approval, proposed martial arts center and karate school, 27 West 80th Place, C-3 Highway Commercial. Are the petitioners here? Staff report, please.
Petitioners requesting special exception approval from section 21-136 to allow a martial arts center and karate school to be located at 27 West 80th Place in the C-3 Highway Commercial zoning district. Petitioners are trained in martial arts and other Asian arts. There will be classes for men, women, and children. There will also be private classes and classes for senior citizens. The hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and closed on Sunday. Sunday may be used for special events. The parking is adequate. Classes are scheduled on different days and times throughout the week. Petitioner was deferred on February 27, 2019. Petitioner was requested to submit a floor design. The 1,500 square feet space will consist of girls and boys' changing room and office, front desk. The practice area will have mats and a bench. The attorney has a copy of the proposed lease. Petitioners are aware of the security camera ordinance for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Span, that we approve case number Z6E6-0219. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Welcome to town, guys.
Thank you.
All right. All right.
Case number Z ten UV dash zero three one nine. Vanderkoen signs, uh, the owner is Centaur Bank, requests variance of use approval proposed electronic message center eighty-three ten Broadway zoning the C three highway commercial. Staff report, are the petitioners here, anybody here? Thank you.
Petitioner is requesting a variance of use approval from section twenty-one dash one eighty-nine eight to allow an LED electronic message center to be located at eighty-three ten Broadway in the C three highway commercial zoning district. Centaur Bank would like to erect a three feet eight by nine feet five electronic message center on the existing eleven five by ten feet sign. The total signage will be a hundred and fifty point eighty-three square feet. Petitioner would like to advertise bank products and services. Petitioners will advertise town events when requested.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by councilwoman Baron, second by councilman Span that will approve case number Z ten UV dash zero three one nine, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, case number Z one five UV four dash zero three one nine. Uh, the petitioners eighty-four fifty Broadway LLC. The owner is Direct Buy Home Improvements Inc. Request for variance of use approval, the purpose is proposed climate controlled self-storage, eighty-four fifty Broadway is a C three highway commercial. Uh, is there, are the petitioners here? Staff report please.
Petitioners requesting a variance of use approval to allow a climate controlled self-storage to be located at eighty-four fifty Broadway in the C three highway commercial zoning district. Petitioners would like to convert the four point eleven acre site and existing buildings to a climate controlled facility. Potential limited flex office and self-storage. The property was originally built and used for a cockpit showroom and general warehouse. The site for many years was the location of the Direct Buy wholesale club. It is now a call center for the Direct Buy ownership who is now selling the property. The proposed use climate controlled self-storage unit mixed schedule will consist of the following. The main floor thirty-five thousand eight hundred and nineteen square feet with two hundred and twenty-eight units. The upper floor twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-two square feet with one hundred and thirty-seven units for a total of three hundred and sixty-five units. There will be five rental offices for a total of nine hundred and seventy-four square feet. Sales office, kiosk, office hours and operation eight thirty AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. Sunday ten AM to five PM, there will be approximately two employees. User customers will have access with key code typically six AM to seven PM, seven days a week. Loading and unloading on the north side of eighty-fourth avenue where current loading resides. Small canopy area for loading. On south side of the existing parking area will have drive up access for customers with slider doors and keypad access. The attorney has a copy of the real estate purchase and sales contract. Petitioners are aware of the security camera ordinance.
Would you like to make a motion to approve?
Second for discussion.
Motion by councilwoman Baron, second by councilman Pettit. Uh, for case number Z one five UV four dash zero three one nine, discussion.
Uh, Sheila, there was no condition about outside storage?
Uh, no, they did not at the BGA level, but I didn't, they didn't have any outside storage.
There's none, none proposed.
Not, no outside storage Jim?
No, none.
Only interior?
Only interior, it's all interior.
All right.
Did you have anything else Jim to add to it?
No, Sheila's report's very comprehensive, we had nothing further, the BGA, uh, asked a number of questions, Joe, you were there, good questions and it was passed unanimously, we think it's a great addition to the community.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Uh, case number Z one six E nine dash zero three one nine, the petitioners Boyer Properties Inc. The owner is seventeen ten West LLC, requests a special exception approval. The purpose is to allow the sales and service of vehicles equipped to assist handicapped individuals. Seventeen ten West Eighty First Avenue, C three highway commercial. Are the petitioners here? Staff report please.
Petitioners requesting special exception approval to allow a sales and services of vehicles equipped to assist handicapped individuals to be known as Mobility Works in the C three highway commercial zoning district located at seventeen ten West Eighty First Avenue. Mobility Works is a national chain of wheelchair accessible van providers serving the disabled community with wheelchair accessible mini vans, full size vans with lifts and commercial vehicles. The new vehicles are modified to provide assessa, to provide, to provide accessibility in locations throughout the nation. One such facility being Brom Ability located in Winemac, Indiana and sent to Mobility Works showroom. Some additional retro fitting may be necessary to suit the individual's need of the client. These minor modifications will be completed in the service bays within the existing facility. These bays will also be used to service vans on an as needed basis. Only Mobility Works vans will be serviced. New vehicles will be displayed in the showroom and along the southern parking areas. The existing building will have a complete remodel and will include repainting the existing machinery and metal, metal panels facade, removing all, uh, dressings along landscaping beds. Removing of the existing parking lot, new lights and replacing them with new LED fixtures. Repaving the entire parking lot. The chain coupled with the Mobility Works signage package are the least requirements for the Mobility Works newer sales and service facility. Petitioners are aware of the security camera ordinance. Hours of operation are Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, Saturday nine AM to two PM and closed on Sundays. There will be approximately fifteen employees for this petitioner only for this use only for this location only.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by councilwoman Baron, second by councilman Pettit that we approve case number Z one six E nine dash zero three one nine, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome.
Thank you.
That concludes BGA action. Any old business? Any new business? At this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment, if there's any public comment, we ask that you come, state your name, your address and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes, any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing the announcements, economic development commission meeting April sixteenth, uh, at six PM. Plan commission meeting April sixteenth, six thirty. Environmental resort committee meeting April eighteenth at two PM. Abandoned blighted properties committee meeting, uh, April eighteenth at two thirty, Marge?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Gene? The town council offices will be closed with the exception of emergency services on April nineteenth and observance of Friday. Redevelopment commission meeting April twenty-third at six fifteen. Next town council meeting April twenty-third at six thirty PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.